Call the meeting to order for the regular city council meeting. First order of business, a roll call. All council members are present. Next, we have the salute to the flag. And in attendance this evening, we have Ms. Sonoma County, Skylar Palacios, and she has offered to lead us in the march of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick note, I had distinct pleasure of attending with Skylar. About a month ago, it was a chili cook-off here in town, a toy drive for Toys for Tots, and it was a lot of fun. And so next year, it's going to be bigger and better than it was for 14. So I know it's a long ways away, but look forward. So first item is proclamations and presentations. And we have a certificate of appreciation to our soon-to-be-retired Administrative Services Director, Karen Kano. And I'm looking for the blue folder. So we have a proclamation honoring Karen on the occasion of her retirement. So I will read this. "A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Sebastopol declaring January 15th, 2015, as Karen Kano Day in the City of Sebastopol." "Whereas, the Sebastopol City Council wishes to recognize Karen for her service to the City of Sebastopol upon her retirement. And whereas Karen began work with the City of Sebastopol as an account clerk in 1986. And whereas, through the years, due to Karen's diligence, hard work, extensive training, and knowledge gained during her employment in the Finance Department, she has been promoted to increasing levels of jobs within the Finance Department, with the current promotion in January 2013 to the Administrative Services Director position, and from which she will be retiring. And whereas, during this time, Karen achieved twice the Certified Payroll Professional Course, which is evidence of the highest level of professionalism a payroll professional can achieve. And whereas, in 2002 and 2015, Karen was named as Employee of the Year as well as receiving the Inspiration Award twice. And whereas, Karen, over the last 28 years of civic service, has provided leadership, guidance, and training to the staff of the Finance Department, and has worked hard to modernize, computerize, and generally create a competent, efficient, and responsive Finance Department for the city. And whereas, Karen is the second-longest-tenured employee currently employed in the City of Sebastopol. And whereas, the City Council is pleased to honor Karen on the occasion of her retirement from the City of Sebastopol. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Sebastopol City Council recognizes Karen Kano for her 28 years of loyal service to the Sebastopol community, and be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Sebastopol hereby expresses their sincere congratulations and good wishes to Karen on her retirement from the City of Sebastopol Administrative Services Finance Department, and hereby designates January 15th, 2015, as Karen Kano Day in the City of Sebastopol. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and the seal of the City of Sebastopol the 6th day of January 2015." So we have our city manager, city attorney, Erin McLaughlin, who is Karen's direct supervisor, who will be saying a few words as well.
By the way, Karen, that company referred parking that day, so... I just wanted to add a personal note for the council and for Karen that in May of 2015, 2012, the city was in a difficult position because our then-city manager and then-finance director was leaving the city on 30 days' notice. At that time, we had a grand total of two employees in the Finance Department. And I sought out Karen at that point, and we talked at length several times about the position of Administrative Services Director, her background, whether she felt she could do it, whether she wanted to do it. We mutually concluded that she could do it and would want to do it. And I can tell you that after her appointment to the permanent position, in summary, I can say she has just done a terrific job under very difficult circumstances. She's been an effective spokesperson for our budget. She's dealt effectively with the citizen groups, with the Budget Subcommittee. She's been nose-to-nose with some members. And she stuck to her guns, and she stood her ground. And I think she has done just an excellent, terrific job. And I couldn't be more thankful and grateful to Karen. We're in a very difficult position, and I'm only sorry that she can't stay and do it longer. But Karen, you've done a terrific job, and thank you so much.
Oh, thanks.
Best of luck in the future.
I just want to say thank you for all the years of service. 28 years goes by in a flash, and we have a great group of employees here. And I wish every one of you the best.
So now, we have the opportunity. With Karen's retirement, we needed to recruit and find a new person to fill her position. Our city manager has done just that, and would like to introduce our new finance director.
Thank you, Mayor Council. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Anna Quan. Thanks for coming up here to join me. Our new finance director, who joined us just yesterday. She comes to the city with a degree in accounting from San Francisco State University, and 15 years' experience, which goes from working for a major corporation to working for the City of Healdsburg as accountant and budget analyst, including managing an operating budget of some $50 million. Working for the City of Santa Rosa, general ledger duties, and all accounting-related duties for transit and parking. And finally, she worked for the City of Ronard Park most recently, where she was responsible for managing and preparing their citywide operating budget of some $85 million. For the City of Ronard Park, she twice served as interim finance director. And she has worked with auditors. She was interviewed by a panel that I assemble, including present and past finance director and other staff members. Everybody universally were just extremely impressed by Anna. She's had the most extensive background check of any employee in my memory. Every reference, without exception, everyone that Anna's ever worked for or with universally tells us we are extremely lucky. So I feel very fortunate in introducing to you our new finance director, Anna Quan.
I went through a ringer. Thank you, City Manager McLaughlin. Good evening, Mayor Slater, and member of City Council. I am very humbled and honored by the opportunity that was given to me. I look forward to working with staff, and city staff, and deliver services to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The hiring of senior staff in Sebastopol is a very, very rare occurrence. We have a tremendous wealth of knowledge and years of service. Just recently, in fact, Rich Hamberg, our public work superintendent, was honored with 40 years' employment. So, and he's just, what, 43 or 44 years old? So it's a rare occurrence, and we're always happy when it happens. At least on my watch, I'm happy because it is a rare occurrence. So the next item we have is a proclamation honoring the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation on its 25th anniversary, and Vice Mayor Perry will be presenting this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to read out loud. You know, that's the second-highest fear after public speaking. I'll do my best, and I see David is here with Rainey, and I hope you guys will accept this and give some remarks at the end. So let me read this proclamation of the City Council of the City of Sebastopol honoring the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation on its 25th anniversary. Whereas Laguna de Santa Rosa has been recognized as a wetland of international importance under the Ramsar Convention on Wetlands. And whereas the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation has for 25 years been working to conserve, restore, and inspire public appreciation for this important natural resource. And whereas, the City of Sebastopol has partnered with the Laguna Foundation many times to restore and steward the city's Laguna properties. And whereas, February 2nd, 2015, is World Wetlands Day. And whereas, the Laguna Foundation, in conjunction with the Sebastopol Center for the Arts, and in celebration of its 25th anniversary, is sponsoring an exhibit entitled "Wetlands: Ever-Changing Waters, Land, and Life" during the period January 15th to February 15th, 2015. Now therefore, be it resolved that Patrick Slater, as mayor on behalf of the City of Sebastopol City Council, does hereby express the city's congratulations and appreciation to the Laguna de Santa Rosa Foundation on its 25th anniversary and its long partnership with the city, and encouraged all citizens to attend the Wetlands: Ever-Changing Waters, Land, and Life exhibit. In witness thereof, the mayor has put his hand and the seal of the City of Sebastopol this day. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rainey Sugg. I live in the city limits of Sebastopol, and I currently serve as the president of the Laguna Foundation. And I want to thank the city for recognizing the hard work that the Laguna Foundation does. And we're looking forward to a really exciting 2015. We've got some great restoration projects looking forward. And we'll be taking close to 1,000 students out into the Laguna to learn about wetlands. And as Sarah mentioned, we're having this collaboration with the Art Center to do a beautiful exhibit of wetland, not only photography, but fine art. And we're going to have some native weavers there doing a demonstration on, is that the 24th of January, I believe? So a lot of exciting things going on in Laguna, and the foundation really appreciates your recognition of our hard work. Thank you.
David Banister, Executive Director of the Laguna Foundation. Thank you for this proclamation, but more importantly, thank you for the community's support for the Laguna ecosystem these many years and for our efforts to restore and conserve that ecosystem. There's no community that's more supportive of our mission than the City of Sebastopol, and we really appreciate it.
Next, we have the approval of minutes for the meeting of December 16th, 2014. Are there any revisions to the notes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one small change, and I don't have my minutes in hand right now, but I believe by memory, it's page 17, there's a mention of when I left the meeting here. In any event, I would just like to add the words, it says Sarah left at 9:45 or something like that. Oh, sorry, that was 8:35. I'd just like to say because of family emergency, if you would. I think it's important to the public to explain that, sort of washing out of the room. Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. We certainly all understood that it would be understandable that others do. Any other revisions? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All in favor? No opposed? And now, we have public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, they're allotted for three minutes. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, members of the audience. My name is Kirk Coaster, and I reside at 272 Washington Court in Sebastopol, California, who I've been for the last 37 years. And my reason for being here is I'm here to support Christine Loveland in her effort to reapply for a position on the Design Review Board.
Sir, that's an agendized item, and we will have public comment for that item at that time. This is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. It's rapidly coming, though. I apologize for that.
I apologize to my...
No problem.
But I'll be back.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak that item is not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Tony Geraldi. I'm the General Operations Manager of Sonoma County Airport Express, which happens to be the primary sponsor of the Miss Sonoma County Scholarship Program. I'm also the secretary of this very remarkable program that we have here in Sonoma County. I'd like to personally invite members of the City Council to our 2015, I'm sorry, 2015 pageant on March 7th, 7:00 PM, at the Scruffels Performing Arts Center in our park, where we will have 17 incredible young ladies that'll be competing for the title of either Miss Sonoma County or Miss Sonoma County's Outstanding Team. It is a scholarship program, but a couple little aspects of the program I might hear about. Again, it is a scholarship program. Every contestant will walk away with a scholarship, and one of the ladies will become a Sonoma County, and one lady will become a Sonoma County's Outstanding Team. The title awards, they'll be making appearances in all our Sonoma County. You'll be hearing from our current Miss Sonoma County, Scott Palacios, here very shortly about some of our appearances. Our program is recognized throughout California. We will be awarding our 69th Miss Sonoma County title. We've got the longest-running program in this California organization. Besides all the public appearances that Sonoma County will be making, she'll be representing Sonoma County at the Miss California Pageant in June in Fresno. Not the most pleasant place to be in June, but it works. And if we're lucky enough, she might be representing all of us in California at the Miss America Pageant next August. I would like to thank former, current council member Robert Jacob. I'm being one of our judges last year. He did a great job selecting our current Miss Sonoma County. Thank you for your time. It's very much appreciated. Again, as a, last year, we had representatives from pretty much every city council in Sonoma County, with the exception of Sebastopol. So I would like to, it'd be great to bring up the representatives there. And as an elected official, you'll be introduced, and you'll have a chance to wave to the audience. There you go. So thank you again, and appreciate all your support of the Sonoma County Scholarship Program.
Hi. Wow, last time I was here, it was for the flight pathing, and I waited like two hours to get in line. But now, I'm right up here. Hi, my name is Maya Boo. I'm a senior at Anfield High School, and I'm a part of the organization Global Student Embassy. I know many of you have been in contact with our staff members. I've been involved for three years now, and I work at the local village park garden at the global home community. And I help organize my peers to go and work in the gardens and produce food. In six years, we've produced thousands of pounds of produce for local food banks, including Ceres, Great Day Labor Center, and Redwood Empire Food Make. I'm really proud to be a part of this organization, and it's been so life-changing for myself and all of my peers. Last year, 30 of my peers from Antalya traveled to Ecuador and participated in coastal forestation projects, which is really incredible. And six years ago, the Sebastopol City Council supported us to start that garden. And as I said, it's produced thousands of pounds of produce as well as stood as a model to inspire, and we produce these kinds of gardens and these kinds of projects for 20 school gardens all throughout California and our Latin American partner communities. And they help engage, we now have the involvement of over 1,100 students. And it started right here across the street with the help of the City Council. So thank you so much for that. We'd really like to have your support again. So I'd love to invite you to a community work day with the City Council members, and you can meet all of our students. Have your emails so I can follow up with you about the date. We've been having the community workdays with Taylor Made World Center, and it's just been so fun for the people who support us to be able to meet our students and get our hands dirty. I know many of you have also been in contact with some of our staff members about the mayor of Bahía de Caracas, from our partner community in Ecuador, coming to visit at the end of this month. And I'd just like to say we're really excited to introduce him to you all. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, City Council members, and welcome. New mayor, appreciate your being here. I'm Dave Hubert, I live at 306 Pitt. And it being the new year, we've got some additional challenges on the smart meter front in that, well, PG&E, we're not sure what they're going to do now. The CPUC has decided that, you know, on the opt-out plan, so far, it seems as if they've been honoring our ordinance, which is one of the few in not just the United States, but in the world. I sent an email earlier with an article from Montreal. Montreal is, their government is looking into ways that they can have a law against smart meters, not allowing them for a number of reasons. And there are 50 bloggers in East Quebec Province that have set up sites to talk about why. It has been a while. The CPUC President, Mike Peavy, who's no longer president, in some of his emails, they've actually stated, well, by the time they acted on it, and they specifically talked about Sebastopol in the email, we would have been already installed. Fortunately, in other words, this is before the opt-out came in and before the ordinance. Fortunately, that didn't happen. But we still have some challenges here possibly to deal with. I've talked to some PG&E people, and they're neither here nor there. But there are a lot of people in this town that have problems with wireless and RF, especially 24/7 on their homes. So thank you for the ordinance, and hopefully, we'll continue to be safe here in Sebastopol. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, City Council, new City Council, new and old, and members of the public. I also, I'm Nancy Hubert, and I live right here in town. And I also am here because I wanted to make sure that we still are all on the same page about keeping our town as smart reader free as it is. Of course, I know PG&E kind of blackmailed the city into allowing the Barlow to be fully smart readered, and that's a place people like me can't even go because of that, with all the metal buildings and all the smart readers. It's basically toxic zone. And I know most people don't feel this stuff, so they probably think those of us who do are a little bit wacko. But it is a real thing. It just can't be seen. It's not like cigarette smoke that you can see, but people also didn't think cigarette smoke was as bad as it turned out to be. So please continue to keep our town safe. We appreciate the ordinance, and we appreciate all of you standing with us on that.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I've had the opportunity of meeting several of you before, but I'm Skylar Palacios from 2014, Miss Sonoma County. And I'm just here to tell you about some of the things that I've done in the past year. I'm a resident of Healdsburg, and I've lived in Healdsburg for 12 years now. But I was born and raised in Sonoma County my whole life. I'm 20 years old now. Miss Sonoma County was my first pageant, and Robert Jacob was one of my judges, so I'm very thankful for that, for choosing me. As a representative of Sonoma County, I got to represent our wonderful county in the Miss California Pageant, as Tony was saying earlier. And it was such an amazing experience. I know many of us aren't super familiar with the Miss America Organization, but all of the women that were in the Miss California program were absolutely amazing women. They were intelligent, spoke so gracefully, and were just basically the ideal young women. It was really amazing meeting all of them. Very inspirational. Some of them have written books, some of them are getting their doctorates, their master's degrees. So it's a program that really values education. In Sebastopol through my reign so far, I got the opportunity to wave in your apple blossom parade three months ago. That was very, that was one of my first parades, so it was a great experience. And then I also got to attend the chili cook-off that Mr. Mayor was talking about earlier. It was a fundraiser for Toys for Tots, and it was a lot of good chili. I went to a previous chili eating, or not chili eating, but chili cook-off, and the chili was not as good, I can tell you that for sure. So, and also, Sebastopol actually is the place where the Miss Sonoma County Program holds our practices. So Coach's Corner, right down the street, donates their space for us to practice in. So Sebastopol has been very good to our program, and I'd just like to thank you for that. Other duties of mine as Miss Sonoma County are waving in parades, as I said before. So I've been to about 12 throughout the county now. I attend the Sonoma County Fair close to every day of the fairs, quite a lot. And I got the opportunity to sing the National Anthem and just walk around and meet some of the wonderful residents of Sonoma County. It was a very enriching experience. The fair is very good to the program as well. They named horse races after us. It was a lot of fun, lots of fun.
That's it?
Oh, gosh.
Are you going to, a real quick sentence or two, just for that one?
Okay. Well, basically, this has been the best year of my life. That's pretty close, yeah. So just, and I wanted to invite you, as Tony did, to the program that will be happening March 7th. We would love to have you there. We're going to actually have Miss California there, so that would be a very fun experience. So that would be a very fun experience as well.
Thank you. Okay, Sarah, how do you want us?
Oh, I'm gonna go this way, because she's a Miss Florida student.
All right. With the photo opportunity, public comment is closed. Interesting way to open a comment. And so... Oh, I'd like to remind everybody to either silence or turn off your cell phones so they're not disturbed. So let's see. The first discussion and action item we have is discussion and action for appointment to the planning commission. We have two terms, or two seats that have expired. And so now we need to appoint two or two interim planning commissioners. We held interviews this afternoon, starting at three o'clock. So we interviewed three individuals for the planning commission. And we have a unique circumstance where we also interviewed for the design review board. And we have a single individual who has applied for both. So the preference by that individual is the planning commission. So we will take that item first, and it is number three instead of number four. So that works for our agenda. And that will inform what happens with agenda item number four, what happens with number three. So with that, I will... Let's see. Should we do public comment on this first?
Yes.
So we'll...
You're doing number four.
No, we're doing number three, planning commission first. So if there is anybody from the public who wishes to speak on the planning commission appointments, now is the time. See, nobody rise, close public comment. And let's see. Anybody would like to start on this?
Well, I think that before we move forward on this, that we need to express... I would like to personally address myself to Commissioner Williams Van Havel, who served, I believe, two terms on the planning commission? At least, perhaps more? And so maybe possibly three. I hate to expose my ignorance of her service to the city, but...
Twelve years.
Twelve years? Okay, thank you. Anyway, I thought she did a great job. She was always on point and a tough cookie to deal with. And couldn't get anything by her. And, you know, the city's in her debt for her service. So I think, you know, we need to acknowledge her service.
We will have a presentation in the future.
Okay.
So discussion surrounding the interviews.
Well, you know, this situation where it's unfortunate that we have more applicants than we have positions open. It's a real dilemma for me personally, and that is that we have two applicants who are very qualified, very experienced. One's a current planning commission member, one's a member of the ERB for many years. And then we have a person who I personally encouraged to apply for the planning commission. And I think this is a classic case of how to get a job if you don't have the experience of, you know, going to try to get the job. So it's a real dilemma. Having said all that, I think the planning commission is in the middle of the general plan update. It's very complex. It relies on having a lot of background knowledge pretty much brought into the position. And so, you know, that's a key factor for me. Am I ready to make a nomination if we're at that point? Right, cool.
Well, I think the way that we usually try to handle this is we get each council member's, in this case, two highest-ranked people. Or I suppose the word is nominate. But each individual nominates their choices. And then basically, it's tally and we figure who has received the most number of selections. Does this make sense to anybody inside my head? How... Okay. So that's how we can do it, is to perhaps list one or two nominees that each of us feels we would like to appoint. Or not.
Well, then, having said that, the two people that I... And I guess I need to go back to that. You know, I wish we had another position open or an alternate or something for that type. Because I do want to encourage people to apply and participate and not just have kind of a closed system. But having said all that, I would like then to nominate Michael Jacob and Zachary Dausch for the planning commission.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Don't all jump in? I'm gonna nominate Michael Jacob and Zachary Dausch. Thank you. Councilmember Glass?
I feel that my microphone is not working. Do you turn it up? I thought so. I feel much as my colleague to the left here. Not enough positions and too many applicants. And I applaud Michael's vision. And but I think that right now, because we are in the general plan process, we need some people who really understand a lot about the law to do with land use planning. And so I would agree with the nomination of Michael Jacob and Zachary Dausch. And thank you very much to Michael Parachi. And I hope he applies for something in the future because I think he's a real asset to our community.
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to share with the people who are here this evening, who might not have been to the interviews, how really delightful the question and answer and the exchange was. I think it's really challenging for us to come up with questions that mean something and for the candidates to answer in that hot seat and come up with a good and convincing and authentic answer. And I think all our candidates did really well. I so much appreciate their willingness to serve our community. I would agree with the two fellows who are nominated. And I also want to say specifically to Michael, I know you're already involved as a downtown businessperson at your front door, on the Downtown Sidewalk Fair, and with the Downtown Association. And I hope you'll continue that and come back again for an appointment. Thank you.
So the... That one's yours. The planning commission is a body of seven, and the terms are four years. So we have two... This... Well, the terms actually expire the 31st of December. And then we have three seats in 2015, and we have two more seats in 2016. So this is an appointment that comes up very often. And so with that, there are always opportunities. There are many folks on this, on the planning commission, who have served for many years. And like Councilmember Eider stated, Planning Commissioner Williams Van Aalen has served, I believe it's three terms. I served with her on the planning commission. And so there are other planning commissioners who have served an equally long number of years and may decide that they are wanting to retire from that position. So there are always seats available. And like everybody else, I really wish that there was a space for three new appointees, or one reappointee and two new appointees to the planning commission. Because I think that that mix of interests, of expertise, of business owners, of homeowners, of... That's what makes it work. And but given that, I believe in this particular instance, I am in concurrence with my colleagues in nominating Zachary Dausch and Michael Jacob. So that is the nomination. Is there a second for that?
One second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? That is the appointment to the planning commission. And so with that, we are in a situation for the design review board, which is agenda item number four, where we do not have enough applicants for the available seats. And it is my opinion that rather than appoint anybody at this point, we should ask if the folks who have reached the end of their appointments, if they would be willing to continue on, reopen the application period and receive new additional applications, do more interviews, and then make the appointment once we have a pool of individuals to choose from. Is there any discussion on that on the part of the council?
I support that. I think it's an equitable way to do it. Hopefully, members of the design review board will continue to serve until that process is complete.
And yes, and at this point, yeah. We will take public comment at this point. So if you'd like to... I'll answer your questions after all public comment is taken.
Hello. My name is Daniel Osmer, and I'm host of Science Cafe and Economics Cafe here in town. And I've been living in the area since 1999. And many celebrate today as the first day of the new year. So I want to wish the council members a great new year. And I really appreciate all that you do for the community. And I just want to thank you. And I support your current candidates for the design review board. And I'm especially glad that you're considering Christine Level and the possibility for her being an active participating member as a practicing design professional in the field. So thank you very much.
I'm Benadega Syster, Bodega Avenue. Couple of things. I really appreciated the interviews this afternoon. I learned a lot. I've been going to the design review board meetings, and I've been really genuinely concerned. And I'm going... And so I asked a staff member, "Can I have a conversation?" I'm trying to understand. But you answered those questions today. And by your holding right now, I think that was a wise decision. What I would like to see for that group is that they hold together. Some of them have the tendency to be a little combative. And like was said today, they try to design on the spot. I think it's really important to get the process down. What I notice about groups is if they seem to be kind of squirrely and kind of all over the place, it's generally their organization that's not solid. So if you can work with that group, you ask one of the interviewees if he... Well, a couple of them, if they'd be willing to sit on that group. I think that is needed before you go much further. It is a very uncomfortable situation to be sitting there listening to some of the things that are said and done. And I don't think you, as a city council, want to see that happen. It's really important to begin to structure it a little bit so it can be effective. One of the things that was said today is continuity. Well, in order to have continuity, you have to have a basic understanding. And so what I want to say, I think Ted Luthen is one of the most gracious beings. When it gets really ugly in there, he always stays very poised. He holds his position. And the thing about being able to disagree is that you don't have to get ugly. You don't have to get mean. You can just say whatever it is you need to say. So I really want to support you in cleaning that one up a little bit because it's not a very good situation as it currently stands. And most importantly, the members cannot be deciding on the spot. They can only make an evaluation of the design that's presented. So thank... But thank everybody for the work they're doing, all right?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Greenberg. I'm a Sebastopol resident. And I'm curious. What I don't understand about what Mayor Slater is proposing is... I understand that... Is why not just to make the alternate, who I think is... I'm curious to speak of Christine Level as being highly qualified, a regular member of the design review committee. I understand that the alternate status is something that is relatively disempowering on the committee itself, that there's been discussion of not having the alternates participate in the dialogue or the discussion, not to make comments, and... Which I would really be against. And the idea that the alternates don't vote. It seems like Christine has been part of the process. She's, I believe, the only one who is a licensed civil engineer on the design review board. She understands what it takes to facilitate a license, which are... That's... Okay. But that... There were people without... You know, who aren't licensed engineers or design professionals who are on the board. I don't understand why she would not be made a full-time member of the design review board and why not search for an alternate. It seems very counterintuitive, let's say. So I'm here to suggest that Christine Level be made voted tonight, that you vote to make her a full member, and that what the search continues for would be alternates. It seems like the logical conclusion, and I would support that. I also have a letter that you received from Linda Triplet, that who wants to speak on behalf of Christine Level to endorse her for the design review board as well. And I think that's in the city record, and I'm just mentioning that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment outside? All right.
Again, my name is Kurt Coaster. And I reside at 272 Washington Court here in Sebastopol for the last thirty-seven years. I'm here on behalf of Christine Level. I personally feel that she is most qualified, certainly qualified, for the position. She has a bachelor's of science degree in architectural engineering that she received in 1987. California Licensed Civil Engineer, which is current. Principal Engineer at Level Engineering since 1991. And two years on the design review board as an alternate. I've attended several design review board meetings. And I've always found Christine to be prepared with the proper documentation, support material, to discuss the projects on the agenda. I can say that from board... Excuse me. And she has a demeanor that is always professional and respectful to all. I can't say that for all board members. At one meeting, I asked a question regarding ADA issue, and the response was laughter and debitory remarks. It was discriminatory and hurtful to me and unprofessional. It was discriminatory and hurtful to me, and unprofessional of a boardroom to respond in that manner. The only person on the board who came to me after the meeting to apologize for the board's bad behavior was Christine Level. This speaks to our professionalism. Thank you, Christine. This type of response is inexcusable, must, and cannot be tolerated by our city staff. I'm certain that our city manager understands fully what the implication of this could be. The other concern I have, in my opinion, is that the Design Review Board is acting and looks like the good old boys' club. I thought we left that behavior behind in the last century. A failure of a highly educated licensed professional woman who works in her chosen vocation on a daily basis may outdo them in education and performance, and I truly believe she does. I believe the citizens of Sevastopol deserve better. Moving forward, the city council should fill any and all vacancies with best qualified applicant for vacancy regardless of gender, color, age, and or sexual discrimination. I strongly recommend that you consider Christine Level for the Board Review Board position. Thank you very much for allowing me this time to speak on her behalf.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Sir?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I want to first say that I have been profoundly touched by the work of the Design Review Board members. Each and every one do in preparation of these meetings, that a lot of knowledge that each one of them has is profound, in my opinion, and they rarely show up. I have seen some instances of bullying. I have actually checked in on the licensed stature of the A category people and found one that did not show up as a licensee that he claimed to have. And I'm concerned about an applicant who is litigious, shows up and loses a decision based on some of the perhaps not so qualified people who misrepresent themselves or their backgrounds on the board. And I wonder, since I have no legal background, whether they can contest some of the decisions of the DRB based on people who are not qualified being on that committee. So, I have also seen Christine Level, whose qualifications are impeccable, be totally ignored, no comment made on what she opined, and I think that's rather peculiar. And for that reason alone, I think she deserves to have a full membership of the DRB as a voting member, to give her some clout, because she can be as qualified as she can be, and if she has no voting status, then all you have to do is ignore her. So, I can't think of anything that I've heard tonight from anybody that I disagree with, and I want to thank you for your consideration of these matters.
Thank you, sir. If you don't mind, can we have your name?
My name is Lynn Oaks, and I'm a property owner at 6681 and 3 Sevastopol.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, close public comment. And let's see, to address a couple of the questions that came up, the list of requirements for membership on the Design Review Board are all available on the website. Alternatively, if you cannot find them yourself, our city clerk can point you in the right Let's see here. What we are doing tonight is delaying the decision, well, we haven't done that yet. What is proposed that we will be doing, that's my idea, I'm sorry. But I looked around, and there was general consensus.
Not out of fear, okay. Not out of fear.
So, what is proposed to do is delay the decision, not say we're not appointing somebody. What we're trying to do is get a pool of people that is adequate for the number of openings that we have. The letter from Linda Triplet, we are all in receipt of, and that's the questions I have here. So, at this point, discussion amongst the council.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. You know, I probably aired in speaking earlier. Earlier today, I did recuse myself from the interviews. I do not have a legal conflict of interest, and the city manager or city attorney can speak to that. I want to avoid the appearance of conflict of interest, and I thought, you know, I should have stepped out of the room. I aired in not doing that, so I'd like to bring that to everyone's attention. And secondly, I thought it was merely a matter of, because of the actions taken earlier, this item was not really going to move forward tonight, but it appears as if it is, and actually I participated. Like I said, I do not have a legal conflict of interest, but I want to avoid the appearance of that. So, I am going to remove myself at this time so further discussion can take place. I apologize for the small amount of participation I did make, because I misunderstood. I thought we were done. I will leave.
Understood. My understanding.
Mayor, councilmember here, I was also distinguishing between the discussion as to whether to reopen for further applications versus taking the item and then making an appointment, or I would have mentioned something about your possible recusing.
But I think in the best interest of everyone, I'll remove myself at this point.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions on staff first. I think it would be helpful to share with the council and the public here tonight the role of the alternate. My understanding is that it's like an alternate juror who observes the whole proceeding, and if somebody is removed from the jury box at twelve, then that person can step in because they've been watching and participating the whole time. In this body, there are occasions of conflict of interest because the different professionals are involved in projects. So, I think that the idea of the alternate is to have somebody on the ready, observing, thinking, you know, in the role without a vote, but actually gaining experience through being the alternate. And I just want to make sure I've got that straight as to the purpose of the alternate position.
Councilmember Bernie, or Vice Mayor Bernie, you're actually, that's correct. The Design Review Board is kind of unique in the sense that to make sure that there's somebody available to make the decision and fully participate for each item, it's set up so that the alternate always attends each one of the meetings and then is available to serve if a member has a conflict of interest or is absent for that particular meeting. So, it's intended that the alternate would be present in meetings and ready to serve if need be.
Okay, good. I think that's just important for us to keep in mind. Also, I had a question on Christine's application. Under category B, there's a handwritten note that she's licensed under civil, she's licensed under civil engineer, I believe, rather than an unlicensed building designer. That's the box that could have been checked, but there's just that hand correction. I don't see a problem with that, but I just want to make sure we're good. Obviously, we are, because you've been the alternate all along, and we appointed you previously. Is that okay? Staff's got it? It's okay. I just wanted to make sure that's good. So, I will share with my colleagues, I'm ready and comfortable making appointments this evening of Ted Luthen and Christine Level for this reason. I thought they both interviewed very strongly, and someone made a comment about Ted's graciousness. I think he came across as very intelligent, very professionally engaged, and, you know, quiet, at ease, and relaxed, and able to deal with controversies or conflicts or that personal engagement that can get uncomfortable. So, I feel very grateful for his past service and would be willing to appoint him tonight. I also thought Christine's answers were very good and on point and to the point, particularly about the board conjuncting itself in a way where the decisions were consistent and not arbitrary. That, to me, was really important, and as well as emphasizing that consistency, taking matters on a case-by-case basis and being really clear. Our candidates were also willing to discuss at the DRB level their own subcommittee to revise the parts of the DRB guidelines that are the most problematic from their experience. And I would encourage the DRB, this next iteration of the DRB, to do that, as well as to work with staff, perhaps, to have some kind of retreat or workshop or training in board relationships. A suggestion was made this evening that the council might work with the DRB to do that, and I think in part, our job is to let the DRB be independent from us, where we are not working with them in such close relationship that we end up influencing their decisions. I really like our advisory boards to take their responsibility and execute that well and independent of the council. So, I think we can make two strong appointments tonight and then put out an advertisement, recirculating the notice, as Mary always does so well, for the alternate position, and see if amongst our community, we can make a special effort and find that person or those multiple applicants. So, that would be my preference this evening.
Councilmember Jacob.
I almost, I feel pretty much the opposite of Sarah. Well, not halfway the opposite of Sarah, it's rare. I don't feel so confident in Christine Level. I feel like we have received a clear complaint from a DRB member about their working with that board member. We've had complaints from applicants specifically regarding that board member, and I've never seen an appointment be so politicized. I haven't received so many people in support, so many letters. I've never impressed as a council member to appoint somebody in this way. I honestly find it distasteful and don't enjoy being put in this position in this way. And I think that was organized by the applicant in that way, and don't find it a very comfortable position. I would be much more comfortable appointing Ted Luthen and leaving two decisions open this evening and moving forward and being more fine with my decision.
Well, I too feel very, I feel uncomfortable about making a decision, actually, right now, mostly because I feel that we're kind of in a he-said-she-said kind of thing. I'm hearing that there's concern about how applicants are being treated, but I have a, I don't have adequate information. All I'm hearing is complaints, so I don't know the validity of these complaints. I don't know, certainly, the implication of a couple of people who've spoken is that some people ignore what one of our applicants says, and that it's the good old boys' club and stuff. And having experienced that kind of thing myself, I'm certainly very sympathetic to that kind of behavior. Not sympathetic to it, but sympathetic against its manifestation. However, you know, I don't know what the validity of all of this flying apparent discomfort is with this group, and so I feel like I'm kind of being asked to be judge and jury without adequate information. I really did appreciate many of the things that Ms. Level said in her interview. I am concerned about consistency of design standards. I think that's an extremely important point. Providing consistent criteria for our design stops everybody from wasting time, and I think that's a very important thing that the city provide to applicants, that we not be arbitrary about the way that we're applying rules. On the other hand, I think there's two things that we're looking at here. One is expertise and consistency, which I'm hearing that there's some, that we need to do some work on consistency and clarity about our design standards. I'm hearing that we have some, we have applicants who have a great deal of expertise, but the other thing I'm hearing is that there's some controversy about demeanor. So, demeanor and how people interact and interface with each other. So, my question is, how can we make, how can we make this body respectful and working in a way together that the demeanor gets the job done? We've certainly had our ups and downs on occasion, us folks here on the council, but we work very hard to get along together. We don't want to be like some other bodies that argue about their seating arrangement. And I think it's critical that legislative bodies figure out how to get along and how to communicate with each other, and also how to communicate clearly with applicants, whether they're saying yes or no, so that that applicant feels like they're getting clear information and a clear yes or no, with reasonable information, as Ms. Level said, that when she, ideally, when she makes a judgment about, you said this in your interview, when you make a judgment about a particular design, that you can tie that judgment back to our design criteria, that it be tied back to some of our city policies. And I do want to see that kind of thing happen. I think that's very important for us to do. But the other thing I want to see is people that are not dysfunctional and that everybody learn how to communicate with each other effectively even when they disagree. So, all of that long-winded discussion comes down to, I'm actually not quite sure what to do right now. I am very, I am very concerned about demeanor, and I'm very concerned about applicants feeling that they're being treated fairly and that they're not being a bunch of dysfunctional behavior going on between, between members of our appointed bodies. Other comments?
I feel the buck has moved to me. So, in my case, as many people know, in my professional life, I am an architect, and so I have perhaps an interesting insight into this. And at this time, I'd like to have our city attorney clarify my position, sitting where I sit behind this table, as well as my position in relation to the Design Review Board when I'm participating on the other side of the table as an applicant.
Mayors, I've advised that before, there's no conflict of interest in you being an architect and nevertheless making an appointment to the Design Review Board. In your practice, under the current city conflict of interest rules, if a sole practitioner, you can make presentations to the Design Review Board. Obviously, you could not participate if those were appealed to the city council or something like that, but there's nothing that prohibits you from making appointments.
So, as a sole practitioner, in other words, I work for myself, by myself. I have no employees. Because of that state, I am able to present to the Design Review Board, because in my case, there's nobody else to make that presentation. So, that cleared up. What I want is the best Design Review Board we can have. I want the highest level of design we can achieve in town realistically, and to do that, because we have three openings and two applicants, and it doesn't have anything to do with the two applicants, for me, it has to do with getting the best and biggest pool of potential applicants and picking from them. And so I stand by my earlier comments that I feel it's premature just because we have two applicants and three openings to appoint those two applicants. I don't know if they are the best two applicants or not. So, that's where I am with this. I'm not sure where we are as far as making a decision. Yes, please.
Yes, please.
So I think if we, the mayor's position seems to be sort of in the middle, and it gives opportunity to meet with Ms. Level and to look at options and sort of understand and figure out a little more detail. I know that Councilman Glass was talking about the he-said, she-said kind of thing. My concern around that is that delaying this decision is going to politicize it more, which means there's going to be more letters, and more speakers, and more trauma, which is only going to make me less interested in, really, honestly, I mean, that's just going to happen, so I don't know if it's going to work to anybody's benefit to delay the decision. So this is my input. I don't have, I don't have emotion, I'm not going to make it easier.
Well, I will share with all of you, of the six appointees, I have heard criticism as to five of them, and I have heard criticism internal to the board, and I don't think there's any point in naming who's saying what or what said, that he's said, she's that thing. I think we know that we have a board that needs to have some training in how to, how to get along in terms of their professional board relationship, as well as how to work the process so that each member of that board can function in their highest capacity, and also relate to the applicants with professionalism. I don't think that's a great big long training. I think that's something with the chair and our staff organizing, it can be one evening workshop, and if people have that little note card in front of them on all future meetings, they can follow those processes and keep awareness and create smoother relationships. I'm very uncomfortable when board members complain about each other to me, you know, because I don't know, I don't really know who's right, and then my personal knowledge or relationship with that person can play into my judgment, and I don't believe that's appropriate, because what really matters is how that individual execute their, their responsibilities as an appointee of this council. So that's where I get back to my interest tonight in making decisions so that at least two of the three spots can be filled, and we have just a discreet opportunity that is created fresh tonight by virtue of our actions, and then we can advertise that. To stall this out and keep it going really does make it a much more complicated and, I think, potentially uncomfortable situation for everybody.
All right. Anything else to add? I'm not sure how we're going to form this.
Well, I have a suggestion, and I know you will vote the way you want to. My suggestion will be to take nominations one at a time, and we have two candidates and three slots, and let's see if we can, you know, do something tonight.
All right.
So I would nominate Ted Luthen.
All right, is there a second for Ted?
I have a second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All right. All in favor of appointing Ted Luthen to the DRB? And I'm not sure what category. He is certainly, he is currently a category B, which is an unlicensed building designer. He has a bachelor of architecture degree, so he has training, but is unlicensed by the state. So I would call the vote, all in favor of appointing Ted?
Aye.
Aye, so that's carries.
Okay. And I would make a second nomination, not for the alternate, but for a regular seat in category of Christine Level.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
So I, okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is a no action, so at this point, what we have is two opens. So the city clerk will re-advertise the opening, and that's not to say that we will not entertain Christine Level's application in the future, once we have the additional pool of applicants, correct? Is everybody comfortable with that?
So I want to check with Madam Clerk, does Christine need to resubmit if it's re-noticed? Just so we know our process isn't clear.
Christine would have the opportunity to use her current application, or if she'd like to reply with another application, she can do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, let's not.
Well, I think it'll all be reset. I just want to correct the record.
Please come forward.
Council, mayor. The comment was made that I orchestrated a political maneuver here and had people comment, I guess was the implication, and that is false, so I just want to correct the record on that. I don't know why it's so impossible to believe that people who come to the DRB meetings might make a positive comment about me, but I did not orchestrate any type of a political move. I'm a very busy licensed professional. I practice in front of boards, building departments, and I'm very well respected in my profession, and I think it does not do the council a service to make comments like that when you have enough facts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we will, just have a suggestion for a break, so we'll take a ten-minute break until seven-thirty.